Good evening. I'd like to call to order tonight's regular El Dorado City Commission meeting for December 7th, 2020. Roll call, please, Tabitha.
Mayor Young.
Here.
Commissioner Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Badley.
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Present.
And tonight, for our invocation, we have Pastor David Crook from the First Southern Baptist Church.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the invitation to come tonight. Appreciate it very much. Is there anything specific you would like me to pray for tonight?
For this end, this year to end.
Yeah, that's, uh, looks like it's coming, right?
Right.
All right, yeah. Well, if you'll join me, I will pray for such things. Father in heaven, I thank you for this great city in which we live. I thank you for the people that are here. I thank you for the life that we enjoy. I thank you for the freedom that we enjoy. I thank you for the goodness of the people that are here. I thank you for this body and ask your blessings on them as they seek to lead us. I thank you also for Christmas, oh God. We, if it had ever been a year that we needed to be lifted up and encouraged with the mess, the message that heaven was concerned so much that he came in the form of a baby, the son of God came and lived among us in a dark world. It is this year. Lord, our world is dark. We live in dark times that just, we're governed, Lord, by so many things that are, uh, that are, make us anxious these days. We are, we are, we are surrounded by pandemics. We're surrounded by fraud and, or concerns of fraud. We're surrounded, God, by, by isolation and, Lord, people are suffering so much not being able to get connected with their loved ones over the holidays. It is a tough, dark time. And God, I'm, I too am anxious for this year to end and the next one to begin and pray, oh God, that it is better than this one. But God, for the tasks that are for tonight, as this group looks to the future of this city and what they must do to be a part of that, I pray, God, that you would help them in these dark times as well. That in the middle of these dark times, you would help these who have been called to serve this public, help them to be able to see clearly in these dark times. I pray that you will help them to see the suffering of people in our city. That they will see the isolation and the terrible divisions that are, that things like masks are creating. And I pray, oh God, that you would help them to see the homeless that are here and that need to be cared for. And I pray, oh God, you would help them to see that the assessment of what is moral is based on you and not a mandatory mask. I pray, oh God, that you would help them to see clearly. And that you would help them, dear Lord, to, to rule and, and lead righteously. I pray that they will see the goodness of our people, the goodness of the many wonderful people in this community who care for our homeless, who care for our others that are sick, the ones who bring meals to those who are suffering from COVID. I pray that you will help them to see the goodness of people, to look after one another and who at a mere request do courteous things will gladly don a mask or serve a meal or, or come and spend the night at a homeless shelter in order to, for people to be cared for. God, I pray that you would help them to see clearly in these dark times. We need good leaders and I pray that this group can be that for our great community. I ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like your shirt.
Yeah, I like your mask.
All right, would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
This was my birthday present yesterday, by the way.
Well, how did you birthday?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so tonight on the agenda, we do have, uh, we've got a proclamation and we've got some recognition. So we're going to go to the proclamation. It's for the 2020 K Citizenship Week proclamation. Whereas the El Dorado Middle School K Club members are joining other Ks and Kettes across the state and observing K Citizenship Week, December 6th through the 12th, 2020. And whereas the Kansas Association for Youth, or K, is a character-building leadership training program directed by the Kansas State High School Association. And whereas the local organization is under the direction of the high school principal, who in turn appoints a sponsor to lead and guide the club program. And whereas K is a nationally acclaimed organization, which provides students an opportunity to learn, to assume their citizenship responsibilities and to enrich their personalities through well-organized programs, projects, and parties. And whereas the program, the programs educate, inspire, and direct members into carefully planned service projects. And whereas these programs emphasize four areas of service: school, community, nation, and world. And whereas K Citizenship Week is a week-long celebration of this association. It is a time to spotlight the youth in action. Each day is designated a specific service: Monday, school; Tuesday, community; Wednesday, nation; Thursday, world; and Friday, club; Saturday, home; and Sunday, family. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of El Dorado, Kansas, to be affixed this seventh day of December, 2020. It is a great organization at our middle school and, uh, had an opportunity to be involved with it when my daughter was, uh, went to school here as well. So K has always been a great organization. Uh, we have some service awards tonight, next on the agenda.
Yes, we do. So this is one of the more exciting meetings we have throughout the year because we get to recognize, uh, city employees who have served the community for, for years. Unfortunately, due to extenuating circumstances, um, we aren't able to have our employees here today. Um, but I will do the award ceremony, if you will, and let you all in the community know who our, our veterans are that will be recognized this year for their years of service. Um, so the first one we have is, um, Kurt Bradshaw. He's celebrating his 10th year, uh, of employment with the city. He works for the Public Utilities Department as an equipment operator. Uh, you may see him driving down the street in our street sweeper or in a dump truck. Uh, he operates a lot of heavy equipment for the street, um, street department and for stormwater division and for a number of other, um, projects and things that we have going on in our community. So, uh, we thank him for his service. Kevin Leinert is also celebrating a decade with the Public Works Department and he is a, he's our building maintenance worker. So you may not see him a lot, but he helps keep our air conditioners running, our lights going, uh, keeps fresh paint on the wall, replaces carpet, does all the maintenance that is needed to keep our facilities in good working order. So, um, that's Kevin. Also, oh, wrong way. Also celebrating a decade of service with the city is Sam Humeck, who is a detective sergeant with the police department. He began as a patrol officer and served as a canine handler, instructor for firearms, taser, and ASP and handcuffing, and is currently in the criminal investigations division as a detective sergeant. Gabe Hudson is also celebrating a decade with the city as a sanitation lead person. So you'll often see him in the front of our sanitation trucks, uh, but he also assists with the commercial routes and also assists with manual routes when our trucks too often break down. So we appreciate those guys for their work. Celebrating 15 years of service with the city is Sue Meyer with, uh, she's a facilities manager, but she's more commonly known as, uh, one of the gals that helps put our flowers together in, uh, and throughout downtown and in the community. She began with the city as the solid waste coordinator, then transferred to landscape specialist, now serves as the facilities manager. Uh, Sue does everything from part maintenance and installing playgrounds to planting flowers, scenery of town. Kevin Wisher is also celebrating 15 years of service with the city. He's our Parks and Rec Director. And he began as a recreation programmer and then was promoted to recreation superintendent and now serves as Parks and Recreation Director. He's worn many hats in the, in the city, including HR Director. He's been a coach, a referee, he lifeguards or has lifeguarded and is also the, one of the current reigning kickball champions for the city. Celebrating 20 years is Jack Zimmerman, captain with the El Dorado Fire Department. He began the city as, with the city as a volunteer in 1998 and before being hired as a firefighter. Jack has held numerous positions, including a driver operator, senior driver operator, and a lieutenant before obtaining his current position as captain in 2006.
It's a great picture.
Right?
It's a senior picture.
Tad Schlesnizer is a, celebrating 25 years as a public utilities employee. He's an equipment operator three. He began as a meter eater for the water distribution division for two years and from there he moved into a maintenance position working on a distribution and collection crew. Over time, he worked his way up to an operator and is currently an operator three, serving as a crew foreman for the department. Tad completed Butler Leadership Training in 2017. Alan Stolnicar has also worked for the city for 25 years as, and currently as positions of equipment operator three. He began working at the cemetery in 1994 before transferring to utilities department to work as a maintenance man for water distribution and collection and sewer collections. He worked his way up to operator two before transferring to public works and then returning back to public utilities where he currently works as an operator three and a crew. Brad Meyer, public works director, serving 25 years, began his service with the city as a recycle laborer, moving up to sanitation superintendent, public works superintendent, and assistant public works director. Brad now serves as public works director and chief hot dog flipper. He also served as, or hot dog griller for many Fourth of July picnics and coaches, uh, has coached many of our youth league teams as well. Serving 40 years with the city is Police Chief Kurt Zeeman. Uh, he began with the public safety department and has held several positions, uh, including patrol officer, master public safety officer, patrol sergeant, patrol lieutenant, and police captain. He has been police chief since 2013. Continuing education is important and Kurt is led by example, being a certified firearms instructor, graduating from Leadership Butler, Wichita State's Mini MBA Program, the Kansas Police Administrators Seminar, and the Kansas Association of Chief of Police Command and Development Academy.
I have a question before you flip this. So, there's a picture there, Chief, of you on a motorcycle. Is this, is this a new uniform we're exploring for the department?
No.
No, okay. I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify.
Special events.
Star Wars, by the way.
Perfect.
So that is our, uh, those are our employees that are receiving service awards this year. We are very appreciative to their service, uh, whether they've been here for five years or 40 years because their work is critical to the services that we provide on a daily basis. A lot of those guys do, uh, a lot of frontline work that you may or may not see, uh, whether it's filling potholes, pushing snow, planting flowers, or responding to, uh, police calls. Numerous calls for service and they do it all with dedicated service to the community. We appreciate everything they do.
Close out the other.
Oh, I got, oh, close out.
Then line that one. There you go. Never mind. It's still lit. I don't know if that start.
So before we move on to the next thing, I, you know, it's unfortunate that, that those employees couldn't be here tonight. Chief, you're here. I, I, I think, uh, it kind of goes without saying, but we need to say it. We really do appreciate all the work that all of our staff puts in. And to your point, David, whether they've been here for five years or one year or 40 years, uh, we wouldn't be able to accomplish the things throughout the city of El Dorado that we have been able to accomplish without the employees and the really dedicated staff. And I think it shows a lot, um, it really says a lot about our city when we have employees that have been here for 25 years, 15 years, or 40 years. Um, I think, you know, if, if, if things were rough, you'd, a lot of these employees would have moved on elsewhere. But they're dedicated to the success of our city and, and I really appreciate, and we, we all really appreciate the work that they do. Okay, so is this another s, award for tonight?
So, uh, Police Chief Kurt Zeeman will present, uh, two lifesaving medals that , uh, the police department has, or will be awarding.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, last week, we gave out a few awards that we'd actually been waiting quite a while to do. We were just waiting that we could have, you know, a department meeting or come to the commission. And everybody knows that COVID's kind of prevented that. So we went ahead and gave these out the other day. Uh, the first one was for Sergeant Sean McCormick. On February 24th, 2020, emergency units were dispatched to a 23, 24-year-old code blue in El Dorado. Sergeant Sean McCormick immediately responded to the scene and found the male unconscious, not breathing and turning purple. He began chest compressions until arrival of El Dorado Fire and Bucker County EMS. Officer McCormick was able to obtain information on what the suspect possibly ingested and relay that information to medical personnel. His quick actions were instrumental in saving this man's life. Uh, he was, uh, that nomination was submitted, the Awards Board approved it, I approved it, and we presented Sean with a lifesaving medal last week. Good job, Sergeant.
Good night. How tall is he?
Six, seven.
Let me see.
Next one is Detective Lieutenant Maggie Schreiber. On April 22nd, 2020, Detective Lieutenant Maggie Schreiber was dispatched to a motel for an unknown call. Upon arrival, people were hat, waving her toward a room. Inside Lieutenant Schreiber observed a man lying on the floor profusely bleeding from his thigh. She located the wound and applied pressure to stop the bleeding as the victim was going in and out of consciousness. She was able to determine the victim's wound was from a gunshot. Bucker County EMS arrived and transported the victim to the hospital. EMS advised if Lieutenant Schreiber had not stopped the bleeding, the victim would probably have died. Uh, she was also, uh, awarded the lifesaving medal that same day. Incidentally, uh, I don't remember the date, a few weeks later, she was dispatched to an apartment complex in town. Uh, Captain Young was with her at the time and it was this gentleman wanting to thank her for saving his life. So, good work, Lieutenant Schreiber. Thank you very much. Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, another one. Forgot about this one. We had a certificate of commendation. Uh, Patrol Officer Brett Sanchez. On January 30th, 2020, Patrol Officer Brett Sanchez was dispatched a suspicious person hiding a motorbike in a drainage ditch. Officer Sanchez was able to locate the suspect after he drove away in a vehicle. Through exemplary and effective handling of a criminal investigation and subsequent search, Officer Sanchez located illegal narcotics and a stolen firearm out of Wichita and several other items of paraphernalia which were now off the streets. And he was awarded a certificate of commendation. I might mention, there's one other that's not in there. Uh, the next day, I think this was done on a Tuesday because they were all working. The next day, we were going to give a certificate of commendation to, uh, Officer Scott Stewart. Uh, he's actually off injured right now, but he, uh, came into the station the other day. So I did award him his, uh, certificate commendation. Uh, his certi, certificate of com, com, commendation. I wanted to say condemnation, but that's not right. Uh, there were two cases that he did a lot of work on towards the end of 2019 and one big case at the first of 2020 that just showed exemplary, uh, field investigations. I think one of them was, uh, all the tire slashings. We had a rash at the end of late 19 and he was able to solve most of them. Uh, and there was a, there was a case where, uh, a young lady was being harassed by an ex and, uh, just kept harassing her at her place of work and it was getting to be quite a problem. And, uh, I think they actually served a search warrant in Wichita as a result of that. So, yeah, Officer Scott Stewart was awarded a certificate of commendation for exemplary field investigation work also. And I think we've got a picture of that. I'll give it to you sometime. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. So next on the agenda, we have personal appearances. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the city commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Tabitha Sharp at 316-321-9100 by 5 o'clock PM the Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes. Any presentations for information purposes only and no action will be taken. And it doesn't appear that we have any personal appearances scheduled for tonight. Next on the agenda is public comment. Um, because we're, uh, having this meeting via Zoom, Tabitha, people were registering public comment with you. Were there any public comments that people that wanted to make public comment that weren't related to the, or an agenda item, that mask mandate that we'd opened up for public comment?
No.
Do you, uh, does the commission have any concerns about moving those public comments to that discussion so that we can listen to what they have to say as we're, as we start discussing the mask mandate? Or do you want to hear those public comments now?
They, they have been told that they're, that they could possibly have to wait a few minutes while we get to the other business. So, I mean, they're prepared to wait for the item. It's up to you.
You guys okay with having, having them talk when we get ready to discuss the mask mandates?
Fine with that.
Okay. Well, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Um, agenda item number nine, the consent agenda is a whole list of 2000, uh, 2021, not 2,000 malt licenses, but 2021 cereal malt beverage licenses. Um, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that the consent agenda is presented, be approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. There's no old business on the agenda, so we'll dive into new business. Um, the agenda item number 11 is the cancellation of December 21st City Commission meeting. Generally, um, in the past, uh, the first meeting of the, of the month of December, uh, we've canceled the next meeting just because it falls right at, right at Christmas time and there's, um, maybe some challenges with, uh, staff or commissioners being present for that. Um, we've been able to take care of all the businesses of the city up through and to, at this meeting. So I'd entertain a motion to cancel the December 21st City Commission meeting if it, you guys are so inclined.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the second City Commission meeting in December, Monday, December 21st, 2020 be canceled.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Uh, agenda item number 12, a budget amendment. David, tell us a little bit about this.
Yeah, so, um, by state law, we have to, we have to amend the budget if our spending or revenue exceeds, uh, I'm sorry, if, if expenses exceed the budgetary authority originally approved, uh, when the budget was approved the prior year in August. So we have two funds this year that require an amendment. The first, uh, fund is the Economic Development Fund. The reason it requires amendment is because we received $149,477 from COVID relief funds that we didn't bank on receiving in, uh, 2019, um, as well as, uh, a land, a sale of land from the Grider addition that we also did not, we did not, uh, budget receiving those funds. So, um, we have kind of a good thing. We have additional revenue. We also have, well, additional revenue and expenses, but both of them are, are good because we have, uh, revenue from the sale of the land and revenue from $3 that we had to spend out. So that's the first one. The second one is, uh, the CNG fund and we have to amend that, um, because we had to purchase a compressor for the natural gas pump that's out there and that cost $54,000 that we did not budget, uh, because we did not expect the compressor to go down. So because of that, we're requesting approval for the budget amendment. We do have to have a public hearing for that. Um, so, uh, the, those are the only two funds that we will amend.
Okay. Um, there's no questions for David. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Did anybody contact you, David or Tabitha, with comments about this for the public hearing? Would anybody in the crowd like to make comments? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the amendment on the 2020 operating budget and the economic development in CNG funds as presented.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Agenda item number 13, the proposed mask face coverings ordinance. Uh, David, if you could kind of give us a rundown of where we're at with this and, and what the ordinance looks like, and then we can invite, uh, pass some public comment before we dive into our discussion.
Sure. So based on our conversation last week, uh, staff went back and looked at the ordinance and-
I'm sorry, David. Um, they can't hear you. Can you make sure, either you take your mask off or put your mic up to your mouth?
Like you said, you were going to do.
So as we discussed last week, um, as part of the initial review of the draft mask ordinance, staff went back and took the ordinance and discussed potential modifications to the ordinance. Um, the, let's see, um, major changes to the draft ordinance include, uh, first of all, changing the penalty type from a misdemeanor to an infraction. Uh, this way, the, anyone that is cited for this will not be, will not appear on their, um, record. Uh, the second one was removing the section exempting activities and events held or managed by the Kansas Legislature. Um, also violators will be assessed applicable court costs and fees. Uh, the ordinance will be effective for 45 days after its effective date unless otherwise extended by an ordinance approved by the city commission. We are projecting that this would be, um, February 1st, 2021, based on approval at tonight's meeting and mid-publication on December 17th. So assuming that those two things happen, um, it will sunset on February 1st unless the commission otherwise extends it. Um, and the ordinance itself will become effective on, at 12:01 AM on, uh, February 18th. So the day after publication.
December 18th.
Yes, I'm sorry. I meant, uh, December 18th at 12:01 AM. Um, so staff looked at, uh, the list of exemptions that were included in the original draft ordinance and after conferring with the police chief and the city attorney, we decided to go ahead and leave those in there because it's, it will be very difficult, um, not to enforce it with those provisions in there. We, we, we are afraid that it could subject the city to, um, potential legal challenge if those exemptions are not in there. For example, the medical conditions, mental health conditions, the age restrictions, um, persons who are deaf or hard of hearing. So there are a number of elements that would make it very difficult for the ordinance to be equitably enforced for those that have hardships that may make it difficult for them to wear masks or face coverings. We've included those and we believe we can, we can enforce the ordinance working around them as the case may be. Um, in addition to that, uh, as I mentioned, we changed the enforcement from a misdemeanor to infraction. Um, we changed some language on that from violation to conviction, which the city attorney advised that we should do. And then finally, we also added that infractions cited by the enforcement of the ordinance shall be assessed applicable court costs and fees as defined by ordinance number G1250, which specifies what those, what those are. Incidentally, I believe court costs presently are $90, um, for each violation. Um, as I mentioned, the effective date is, um, December 18th and then the commission will have the opportunity 45 days later to review and pass an ordinance to extend it if it is the desire of the commission to do so.
What was the staff's recommendation?
Um, I don't believe that the staff prepared a recommendation in terms of whether you should adopt the ordinance or not, um, given the-
Did they say it didn't matter if you wore a mask or not?
You, the staff or CDC?
The staff, the city staff. Likely why to say it on Facebook that it was said by the city staff?
I don't believe they've ever said that.
What did they say? Did he miss quoting something from the city?
Um, I, I guess so. Staff has never made, staff would, if the commission approves this ordinance, then individuals within the community will have to comply with the ordinance. We've never said that people should not or should wear masks. We're just waiting for the commission's direction in terms of which, which way we want to go. That answers the question. I don't, I didn't know any staff members have made any comments on Facebook or anything, so I can't. The, the city has not made an official statement on Facebook with respect to whether people should wear masks or not. We are encouraging people to wear masks up until the point of this ordinance is adopted because that's something the commission has requested us do. But barring that, there's been no official statement with respect to this ordinance and whether people should wear masks to comply with the ordinance. and whether people should wear masks to comply with the ordinance.
So, thank you, David. We can, we've got some people online that had registered for public comment. So Tabitha, tell us who we've got, and then we can let them rock and roll.
Okay.
They've all had the rules explained to them and.
Yes.
Yeah, so tonight's public comment, just for everyone that's online here, tonight's public comment will be three minutes. As with any of our public comment, let me fill over our public comment piece here. We ask that you not discuss personnel matters or matters pending in court currently. And we're limiting tonight's presentations to three minutes, so. Let's dive in, have you got it, Tabitha?
Okay, we're going to start with Jackie and John Piper. They're, they have both registered to speak. Jackie, there you go.
Okay, good evening. My name is Jackie Piper. I reside at eight eighty Northwest Thirty-Fourth Street in El Dorado. I wanted to participate in this conversation for a couple of reasons. The first is that, quite frankly, I didn't think that as a resident of El Dorado, Kansas, I would be put in a position of having our city commission render a decision of whether we should be wearing masks, and stunningly, them applying graduating monetary fines for not wearing a mask. When I found out about this meeting recently, I sent you all a letter explaining why I disagreed with such a mandate. I followed up this meeting with links to some of the scientific research on the effectiveness of wearing masks. I truly hope you have taken or will take the opportunity to review this material before making a decision. I'm sure the individuals who are demanding this mandate be passed will bring forth their version of the science that tells them that masks are effective. However, we all know that this pandemic and whether to mask or not to mask has become a political football. There are those who have preyed upon the fears of people who have not taken the time or been able to actually read the scientific reports, which emphatically have shown that surgical masks are ineffective at stopping aerosol particles smaller than five microns. Aerosol virus particles like COVID nineteen measure between two point five and point two microns, according to the Association of American Physicians and Surgeons in their online article titled Mask Facts. Cloth masks, because of the wide weave, are much worse. It appears that six feet distancing and washing hands is the best way to keep ourselves healthy. For those of you listening in on Zoom, there's a very informative article titled The Science Is Conclusive, Masks and. It's on the KDH website page.
Jackie.
I truly can appreciate the frustration and helplessness.
Jackie, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, can you go back probably about thirty seconds? We lost sound and didn't hear anything.
A CDC study showed that eighty-five percent of people who got the coronavirus in July always or often wore masks. Our own Kansas Department of Health website shows that counties with mask mandates had more than twice the percentage of increase in cases than other counties. I'm not making this up, it's on the KDH webpage. I truly can appreciate the frustration and helplessness you commissioners and others must feel. People are dying and getting sick, and it is heartbreaking to watch. We all want to be proactive. We want to do something to help. Unfortunately, we were told at the beginning of this horrible year that the best thing we could do was to flatten the curve so that our hospitals could prepare for the onslaught of severe cases. And truth be told, Kansans have done just that. We've sacrificed our income, we've sacrificed our relationships, our children are sacrificing part of their educations. We have sacrificed so much. And now you want us to cover up our faces because you feel compelled to do something, anything, even if it's not based in science. When did we start thinking and believing that we could actually stop a virus barring a vaccine? The Kansas Policy Institute has an article titled Mask Mandate Made Unnecessary as Kansans Mask Up Voluntarily. The New York Times took a survey of two thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand residents in U.S. counties about wearing masks. They asked Kansans how diligently they wore a mask. Guess what? According to the responses, statewide, ninety-three point four percent of Kansans wore masks. Surprisingly or not really, counties that mandated masks came in at ninety-five percent and non-mandating counties at ninety point three percent. Why would you possibly want to create a mandate to punish residents of El Dorado with fines of up to a hundred dollars? And I'm curious, if the fine is not paid, are you then going to put us in jail?
Ms. Piper, you've reached your three minutes.
We are fully capable of making this decision for ourselves. And it may, may not coincide with the decision.
Ms. Piper, you've reached your three minutes.
Plus? Yes?
You've reached your three minutes.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie.
I believe your husband wanted to speak?
Yes, please.
Would like to go.
Yep. My name is John Piper, I also live at eight eighty Northwest Thirty-Fourth. And I would just like to ask the commission to please follow the lead of the county commissioners. As a business owner for thirty-four years in El Dorado, we're having enough problems keeping businesses afloat in town with the man, with the difficulties that we're having from this COVID. We don't need to add mandates to it. It should be up to the business owners on how they want to run their businesses, how safe their employees feel in their businesses. And as far as customers coming into their businesses, the customers have the option of coming in or not coming in. That is on the customers. And, and I fully understand those that don't want to if we are not masked up. We try and stay back, we social distance, we do everything we can. But in our situation, we work in a loud, noisy environment that's very hot, and wearing a mask would be a safety hazard, it would be a health hazard. And we just really don't want to do it. Also, I'm concerned about opening doors for other restrictions further on down the road. If we give in to the mask mandate now, what is going to come next if the mask mandate doesn't work? There's already been beauty shops that have been shut down, restaurants, churches, that have all suffered financially. The people that work there are suffering financially. Weddings have been canceled, which has a tremendous trickle-down effect on businesses and on service industry. And it's just, it's hard for everybody. And then I understand that we need to do something. Voluntary masking, I think, is, is going to do as much as having a mandate. Because a mandate is just going to be one more thing that we have to worry about as business owners that we shouldn't have to. Also, there's going to be a great inconsistency. I have a lot of people that come to my business from Eureka. It's not mandated in Eureka that they wear a mask. So when they come to El Dorado and they are manned, they get a ticket because they don't have a mask on, what are they going to think of our town, and will they want to come back and do business in our town? And I just really hope you consider it. I know it's a hard decision, you guys are between a rock and a hard place, I understand that. But I'd really like to see the consistency of staying with the guidelines that the county commission has set. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who do you have next, Tabitha?
We'll go to Shelby Smith. Shelby, can you unmute yourself?
Yep.
Hi, Shelby.
Hey, thank you, commissioners, thank you, Mr. Young. I'll see you tomorrow night, Bill. Hey, I'm just pro freedom, pro freedom of choice. I think business owners should be able to set their own policy, no shirt, no shoes, no service. If they want to open a business and not require masks, that should be on them. I think your guys' proposal is almost enforceable, and it's not in the spirit of preventing a disease from spreading. You can wear any type of cloth you want, any type of homemade material you want, put on your face, and we won't ticket you. But if you don't do what we say and wear something over your face, you will be ticketed. I wear an N ninety-five mask at work to help me, to help prevent me from getting cancer from my, my materials that I work with. Most of them say warning caused cancer. I do drywall, I've got a construction company. The N ninety-five mask does not even keep drywall dust from getting into my beard, alongside my nose, in my eyes. Putting a T-shirt over our face and pretending we're stopping a virus does nothing, it's just virtue signaling nonsense. And I just don't see nine, nine months into a pandemic, oh no, we better have a twenty-some-day mandate to wear masks or we're going to fine our citizens. Thirteen people have died as of, I think, two days ago, out of sixty-six thousand people in the whole Butler County. That's not, we don't need to be so scared of, of those numbers. So that's my opinion, I think we, there's no need to pass this. I own four homes in El Dorado, I live in Augusta, but I have a house on Topeka, Sixth Street, Ellitt, and Benton. And I was talking with the mayor of Andover a few days ago, and Andover is starting three or four new businesses this year, and he said they're on schedule to raise maybe a hundred thousand dollars more in sales tax this year during a pandemic. I know a lot of people enjoy going to Andover, not having to wear a mask everywhere. And this, this is what's crazy, we can get on a plane and fly next to everyone, take off our masks and eat in close proximity, we can go to a restaurant and eat next to everyone. It's just, if we were going to be serious and this was a serious problem, we would need fully functioning respirators, goggles, masks. Anyone with a beard would have to shave and have their mask spitted to their face. This is just virtue signaling to look good and just all conform. And there's no, there's no science behind a T-shirt stopping a virus. And I appreciate y'all's time, and thank you for your hard work and your frustration that you're going through.
Thanks, Shelby.
Thank you.
Shelby, is Heather with you, or is she on the phone?
She can come in here, or she's on her phone.
She's probably one of these on the phone, so I will let her go that way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I believe. Heather, can you unmute yourself?
Hello?
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Is this Heather?
Yes, it is.
Can you state your name and address for the record and give three minutes?
Sure, thank you. Yes, my name is Heather Smith, and I live at seven twenty State Street in Augusta, Kansas, six seven zero one zero. And I, first of all, wanted to thank all y'all for the opportunity to be here this evening and chatting with you. And I am just kindly requesting that instead of mandating ineffective cotton or linen or silk masks, that let everything in and out, as anyone can tell by clothes, I mean cotton breeze. So everything goes in or out. Instead of requesting and mandating that, how about we be more proactive and mandate that people, you know, I don't know, get forty-five to sixty minutes of moderate exercise, five to seven times a week, or that each plate of food be half-filled with a fresh green salad, or, you know, banning pop from being consumed because of what the unnecessary load of sugar does to a person's body. I mean, I sent a video to Bill Young showing the ineffectiveness that a gentleman in Wichita did. I don't know if he's had a chance to see that, I sent it last night, but this gentleman was showing three or four different types of masks outside at night with his cold breath, and how everything just went out. I, I mean, it, it stopped absolutely nothing. I don't want your police force, you know, having to be put under extra undue stress and work. You know, I would hate for neighbors to be turning in neighbors, or, you know, for crying out loud, taking the dog for a walk. Are we going to get a fine if we don't have a mask on? I mean, I realize I don't live in El Dorado, but we go to El Dorado and do business. And, I mean, that's just going to, I don't want to say prevent, but dissuade lots of people like myself that are opposed to this ineffectiveness of wearing a mask. I mean, I can think of better things. We can ban alcohol consumption, or smoking, or illegal drug use, or, you know, I mentioned earlier, pop machines. But let's not ban seeing people's faces because we are people and interact with people, we don't interact with just a blank slate. And it's hard to get a read on people when you can't see the whole face. I have a very, very hard time hearing and understanding people when they have their face covered up. And at forty-six, to say that is frustrating, let alone older populations. It's frustrating as all get out. So I realize that you have the ultimate decision to make, but I'm just kindly requesting that the masking mandate not be put in effect. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. All right, who do we have next?
Mr. Humig, you appear to be having some sound issues. Can you connect to your sound? Sean, can you hear me? We'll try the next one. Is Cindy Yordi on? If so, can you unmute yourself? Tom Fadre? Nate Weiss? Tony Guessen? Try this one more time. Cindy Yordi, Tom Fadre, Nate Weiss, or Tony Guessen?
Hello. This is Levon Yordi.
Hi, Levon.
Hi, can you state your name and address for the record?
Okay, my name is Levon Yordi, one twenty Woodland, El Dorado, Kansas.
Levon, I didn't have you sign up for public comment, I had a Cindy sign up.
Yes, that's my wife, and she's on another line.
Okay, that's up to you guys then. Okay, the commission will allow it, you have three minutes if you'd like to start.
Okay, well, thank you very much. As far as the mask mandate, I have trouble breathing anyway because I've had cancer in the past. And putting a mask on is not something that helps me to breathe. Matter of fact, it starves my air. So I would think that's in, in the plus. Besides that, once again, I would like to verify that the scientific information certainly shows that the mask does not validate its necessariness. So I appreciate so much your time, thank you for allowing me to talk, bye.
Thanks, Levon.
Sean, we had you, and then.
Sean, can you hear us? Sean, can you hear us?
Can you hear us? Sean, can you hear us? I think he's having sound issues. Sean, if you'd like to disconnect and maybe call one of the phone numbers, we could let you in. Sean, can you hear us now?
You love technology, don't you, Nate? We can't hear Sean.
He's talking.
Ask him to just call, call in.
Ashlyn's faster than I am, evidently. Okay, go call one of the numbers and we'll let him back in.
Okay, so Tabitha, who, did you have others? Is there anyone else in the waiting room or anyone else that was on the list to talk?
I had a Tom Fadre, Nate Weiss, and Tony Goosen that don't appear to enjoy the meeting.
Would you all need to speak?
It's up to you guys if you want to.
He's here.
Yeah, go ahead. You're, you're here.
Well, thank you for letting me. I empathize, sympathize actually with your plight. I, as a leader of a group of people, have had to deal much with this issue with varying opinions out there, and none of, and none of the decisions we have made have made everybody happy. So you have my sympathy in that regard. I, I have a couple of questions that I will ask. I will wait for an answer if you're going to give one, but I would just like to wonder aloud, has, have you done your due diligence in researching the effectiveness of masks? Because there is, and in my honest, objective opinion, it is as inconclusive as we can possibly make it. It's easy to find information pro and con if you look for it. And it's all scientific, it's medical, and it's medically based. And so the best we can say is it's inconclusive. I also have a question as to why you are motivated to do this. If it is because you are afraid for your health or for the, the health of your people, I honor that. I applaud that concern for the citizens of your city. However, I would encourage you to act not based on fear, but on faith in your people, on faith in God to protect your people. I would also like to point out that if it's not fear that you base this on, which there's a lot of that going on in our society, and I understand very much how, how easily it is, easy it is to get sucked into that. But if it's not based on fear and if it's not based on diligent science, then the only conclusion I have left is it's based on control. And I, I, I know the people of this city are good people, and I want to encourage you not to pass it if it's based on control, because the people of this city, as I have found out, are inclined to rebel. And they are inclined to push back severely, and they will do it against you. I'm not inciting that. I've experienced that because of the decisions we have had to make as a church, okay? So please know that no, there's, I'm sure you already know that not everybody's going to be happy with your decision that you make, but please know that you must do due diligence in order to approach the subject with a new mandate. You're going to turn good people into criminals if you pass this, and you don't want that, I promise. Thank you.
Thanks. Did you, were able to get Sean on? Thank you.
Yes.
Were you able to get Sean on?
Mr. Humig?
Close public comment. I can relay some information. Sean, just sort of want to understand. Sean called me last night. I've got a message from him, and I told him just to call if he wanted to give the message to everybody else. So I could pass, pass some of that along, not, not in his words. But, so we've heard the ordinance, we've had some public comment. I think it's an opportunity now for the commission to kind of weigh in and kind of see where, see what you guys, other questions you have, other concerns or thoughts you have. I know that we've had a lot of communication from the public over the, since Wednesday. Tabitha and Christina have been tabulating much of that, trying to send out as much of that to us as they can. So I know there was a lot of, a lot of information to read, a lot of comments to read. So I'm just curious if somebody wants to dive in.
You always start with me. Okay, I have basically written my comments down just so that I can stay on subject. I sincerely do appreciate and respect everyone's opinion on a mask ordinance. I do believe that most of us can agree to disagree and still remain friends. This has not been an easy decision to make, and I did not make it lightly. I have received close to 100 emails, plus many phone calls, as well as speaking with people in person. I have decided the best way for me to stay on topic and to explain my position was to write down my comments and share them with you. I have many concerns about the wearing of a mask and not wearing a mask. I have received and heard opinions both for and against. I have read the articles attached to the emails, as well as doing my own research. I have watched the videos attached to some of the emails, as well as videos that I researched. I truly wish there was an absolute correct answer to this pandemic, but there is so much information on both sides. As a commission, we have received input from both school districts, from the hospital, from doctors and nurses, from the Butler County Health Department, from the EMS director, from our police chief, and from some local small business owners. We have heard from these people because we needed to know how they were being directly affected. These are the concerns I have. Our schools, which means our children and grandchildren, are not receiving the education they deserve because of the spread of COVID. They deserve to be in a classroom with a teacher and their friends. Our children and grandchildren are missing out on one of the most important aspects of their young lives, their education. Instead, they are on remote learning, on a tablet which to them is associated with game playing, maybe with someone at home monitoring them, and very little socialization. They are falling behind, and we as a community have a responsibility to them. If we don't do something to help the schools, as you've heard said, we could possibly lose an entire generation of children who are our future leaders. Schools are suffering staff shortages, which includes teachers, food service, bus drivers, paras, and more, because they have COVID or quarantined or caring for a sick family member suffering from COVID. These cases have been tracked back to outside sources, not spread among the children. The hospitals in our county are at or are reaching critical level. They too are suffering from staff shortages for the same reasons mentioned above, as well as extreme fatigue and burnout. If you live close to the hospital, you know that there have been several landings of the medical helicopter to take patients to other hospitals or to transportation to other hospitals. Our first line of defense is being stretched extremely thin, and personnel are suffering. Our EMS director has stated that there has been an increase in the number of calls for assistance and transportation. Our police department is also short-staffed because of COVID or quarantine, as are other departments in the city. Our local small business owners are fighting every day to stay in business and are trying very hard to stay open, as well as protect their employees and their customers. Some of our restaurants and fast food establishments have closed their dining rooms and only offer carryout service. Some of our service businesses, like banks, have closed their lobbies to the public. The city facilities are closed to public access, and the county courthouse reopened today after being closed for both, for two weeks. Both the city and county are suffering due to staff shortages. Some of our churches are closed to worship, a decision they did not take lightly either, to keep their parishioners safe. Some churches have made the decision to stay open for worship, but with strict guidelines that must be followed. This is a public health issue, and part of being a commissioner means protecting the public. None of us are exempt from catching COVID. Even some of the healthy of us are getting sick. Let me share a personal insight. Several years ago, I contracted encephalitis and viral meningitis. Both my brain and brain lining were infected. I spent five weeks in a coma in the ICU and was intubated. If asked, I can share with you the long-term effects I suffer because of being intubated for five weeks. I spent an additional 135 days in the hospital and rehab. After being in the hospital for 187 days, I did another six months of physical therapy. I cannot begin to imagine doing this without the love, support, and presence of my family. They were there to give me support, to push me, to scold me and lecture me when it would have been easier to give up and stay in the wheelchair. They would not and did not give up on me. Many COVID patients don't get that support. They are alone with only medical personnel around who are stretched thin dealing with other patients. People deserve better. We need to work together, not against each other. We need to respect each other's belief. This is not the time to work against each other for hopefully a better 2021.
Thank you. Nick, Greg, Matt, who wants to dive in?
Thank you, Kendra. That was very good. All my emails and phone calls, I got 60% of them were for a mask mandate and about 40% were against. And all of them were telling me to do the right thing. I noticed that there was a lot of emails that come from people outside the city of El Dorado, and there was just a few that come from people in the city of El Dorado. I did go around to some of the businesses here in town, and they all told me that they had to wear a mask and they would like the people to, to wear a mask into their stores. And like Kendra said, a lot of them have just shut their doors, and they're not letting people in it, and you've got to go through the drive-through. So, again, I'd like to say I, I appreciate Kendra for what she's saying, and I will fully support you, Kendra, on what you had, what you had to say.
Thank you, Greg. Matt?
I too have received a ton of emails, a ton of information. Everyone, including Mr. Kirk here, said to look at the research, look at the data, look at, you know, they would give us data to look at. And I looked at it, but I also did my own search. The data right now shows that we have 2,400 cases of COVID in Butler County. Between March, March 1st and August 1st, we had 200 cases. On August 1st, or September 1st, we had 400 cases. In 90 days, on December 1st, we went from 400 to 2,200 cases. That means that it's spreading. That means that it's spreading like wildfire in our county. Of the two major, two major hubs of the active, of cases, it's been Andover and El Dorado, pretty much neck and neck, about 70, 70 cases apart from each other. Right now, we have 426 cases, 14 deaths. As one, one of the people said, only 14 deaths. And that is just in Butler County. The, the, the information, the people were, arguments against were that CO2 is getting trapped in masks. That's a false statement. CO2 is smaller than COVID. CO2 gets out of, gets out of masks. So the risk of CO2 intoxication of a person is not there. Masks don't work. And we got a ton of information, a ton of data from Poland, from Sweden, from China, from Korea.
Don't forget Denmark.
Denmark, I'm sorry, I can't forget the Danish. The one that sits with me the most is the one that came from KU, and I'm not talking Kentucky, I'm talking Kansas, University of Kansas. Dr. Donna Ginther performed a research on what happened in Kansas from when the mask mandate went down on July 3rd until, I believe, the first round of information came from would be, or the end of October. Economics, so her, her information doesn't, doesn't take in consideration that masks work, doesn't take consideration of people not wearing them because of this, because of that. Doesn't, it's economics, so it's the straight numbers. I reached out to her last week, and I actually had a conversation, or email conversations with her. She sent me tons of information, but the bottom line is, according to this, according to one of the top people in economics, one of the top universities in our state, looking at, at our state, it cut cases down 50%. Hour and 50, hour and 30 minutes ago, Mrs. Ginther sent me another email. "In addition to look at COVID cases, we started looking at hospitalizations and deaths. We need to redo the data, redo the data on hospitalizations and should have new results in a day or so. Our preliminary results show 50, it's a 50% decrease in death rates adjusted for population in counties with a mask, mask mandate. Based on our analysis, you will be saving lives with a mask mandate." She sent me all, many different things, followed her math. She showed her work just like any good calculus or trigonometry class. She showed me, she walked me through how they did it. I'm having a hard time after all weekend going through this, talking to people, looking at information, looking at information that really I didn't feel paid much attention to who we are. And this was directly about us. And I've come back to this time and time again. It cuts the cases down by 50 to 60%. Unconstitutional. I mean, I think that, I think Lee White took care of that one for us a couple of days ago, that, that the Kansas Attorney General said it's not unconstitutional. One that's kind of set me weird, and I, and I, I went and talked to, to dental issues, cavities, gingivitis, something I hadn't heard before. So I went to my dentist. My dentist takes care of 80% of people in this town. I asked him, "Are you seeing anything like this?" They had not seen any, any research through the, the dentist association, and they're not seeing an uptick in cavities or gingivitis or anything. Actually, they said, one of them said that it's probably better for you in the fact of cavities because your mouth's more moist. And the reason you get food and sticking to your teeth is because your teeth are dry. I didn't think of that, but truly, he thinks that a mask would do you better, good for, for cavities and, and to decay and whatnot, rather than not wearing a mask. So that one's false. I have a brother who works at a hospital in New York City. I have a sister who's a teacher in North Kansas City. I have a father who lives in Chicago. I have one of my best friends that lives in, in the Boston area. Every one of them are watching this. Every one of them are seeing this go out of control. I was for a mask mandate back in May. Me and Greg were both there, and we were, and we were both prepared to vote for a mask mandate. mandate. I am glad that my fellow commissioners decided to take a look at it again and to readdress it. Takes courage and it takes strength and I'm, I'm, I'm very proud of both of you. It's, and I'm proud of you Bill for standing up to what you feel you believe also. I've looked at the information. I'm not looking at it in fear and I'm, I'm looking at it in science. This is not about control. This is about saving my neighbors. This is about saving Joyce Smith. This is about saving Connie Parsco. This is about saving Mama Lo. That's what this is about. I am a yes for a mask mandate and I'll stand by it.
Thank you, Matt. Nick, what do you got?
I don't have the, know how to do all the research. I wish I did, but I don't. So I rely on talking to people and, and I talk to people I know. We don't always agree, but to me, you said this is going to affect if it passed the 18th and, correct me if I'm wrong, but then it would expire February 1 unless it was extended. So, little over five weeks, five and a half weeks. Five and a half weeks doesn't seem like it's, that's asking a lot to me for people to wear masks if for, if for no other reason. If it makes people that are afraid of it more comfortable, do it for your neighbor. Do it for them. Five and a half weeks, big whoop. I mean, and, and the only other thing that I wanted to say is, like, like Matt said, there's, and Pastor said, I mean, there's science on both sides. I mean, who knows? Bottom line, we don't know for sure, but who knows? So, all close was saying, it can't hurt, it might help, and I'm in favor of a mask mandate.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. I've got a couple of things. First of all, I think that this is the great part about the type of society and the type, the type of society that we live in and the type of municipal, local-controlled government that we have, that we can have these kinds of discussions, a decision we made tonight and then we'll drive on from there and, and continue governing. So, I truly appreciate all of the comments and, you know, I had a conversation with Kendra the other day about how much I, how much I, how much I value the input that I get because I learned from, from the commissioners and I learned from my interaction with the public because I don't know everything far from it. You know, I talked a little bit last Wednesday about some of the concerns that I had. Those concerns really focus around, I, I don't and not one to get into the argument of the efficacy of masks. I agree completely that, that there, there are, there's an awful lot of information out there on the internet that kind of goes both ways, but I wear a mask, I, I wear a mask for multiple reasons. Part of that, Nick, is what you just said, like, what can it hurt? What can it hurt? But a big part of that is because the people that I interact with, when I go to the grocery store or when I'm out in public, I want to make sure that they're comfortable because I feel like that's part of my civic responsibility to be a good neighbor. So that's, that's part of, that's part of my right, that's part of my responsibility as, as a citizen of our town, of our community. And, you know, I mentioned, I mentioned last week and when I, when I talked, a quote that I'd read on the internet that I, that just really kind of struck me that day that said, insisting on your rights without acknowledging your responsibilities isn't freedom, it's adolescence, and that's what I was referring to. We, we have those responsibilities to be good to our neighbors, those responsibilities to, to, you know, to interact appropriately with businesses that require masks because make no mistake, it's important that the public understands that every business in our community today has the right to require masks in their facility, every single one of them. And they can make that decision, in my opinion, without the government stepping in and handling it for them. I brought, I too went to this, to the CDC website to look at where the numbers were and what I saw was in the communities that we know have mask mandates that were roughly our size, that we interacted, or that we, that our chief contacted their, their police department to get some feedback on was Winfield and Poria and Hayes. And those, those three communities experienced either the same or a higher growth of their COVID positivity rate from July until today, or until last week when I pulled the numbers. So with a mandate in place, they were in the same position that we are today. One of those was a, was a misdemeanor, the mandate was a misdemeanor and I'm glad that we at least addressed that piece of it. You know, I, I put, I wrote something down as well Kendra, I'm kind of like you, sometimes I get to rambling, so I don't want to, I'm not saying you're rambling, I'm saying I get to rambling and so I lose my train of thought. So I wrote some things down. And this, for me, is the reason why I am opposed to a mandate of this sort. One of the reasons is the philosophy behind this. Ronald Reagan said in a news conference that nine most terrifying words in the English language are, "I am from the government and I'm here to help." Make no mistake, this idea wasn't invented or coined by Ronald Reagan, it was used long before him, but his thought process, this thought process is why his speeches tended to resonate with the people. He rarely invented concepts in his speeches. He was popular because he said things that the majority of the population who were largely ignored were already thinking. And when I talk about the majority of the population that were largely ignored, when I tallied up the, the emails that came from city and I combined that with phone calls, social media direct messages, not social media posts, and text messages, it was three to one, 124 nos, 43 yes, so about three to one opposed. President Reagan made the statement during the president's news conference and in context throughout that news conference, as well as in his 1981 inaugural address, he elaborated on specifically what he was opposed to, and that was the idea that government knows better than you, what's good for you. Ronald Reagan often elaborated on his belief that the United States is a success because we are founded on free, independent entrepreneurial spirit and, and free thinking. Therefore, the rise of government overreach would lead in the opposite direction. We cannot destroy the free market and creative spirit of our citizens by building an expectation that government has to come in and do something whenever a problem arises, instead of trying to work with our neighbors, be gracious members of our community, and solve the problems in a team, in a collaborative way. I don't in any way, and it's important that you guys understand this, I don't in any way question the intentions or compassion of any of you. I, I don't. I will say that generally speaking, if the city government does things, it'll be done the way city government thinks it should be done, not necessarily done in a way that will actually help people. Compassionate activism is fine and good, but when combined with the power and scope of government, it can produce policies that aim for some greater good while missing the point that it actually involves people. I think the numbers from other communities in Kansas with mask mandates show clearly that they're in no better shape than we are. They, just like everywhere in the US, are experiencing increasing numbers of positive cases. What's the difference between them and us? They've added an extra burden to their police department, to their city administration, and really to what end? Because the results are the same. I received a great email from a local citizen that I would like to share with the public. He's asked that I, and you all received the email as well, so, so you know who it's from, but he's asked that I not, because of his job, is asked that I'm not share his name. He's a citizen of El Dorado, he's been a police, he's currently a police officer in another community. He has some sympathy for us as well because he says this has presented pressures that we didn't expect when accepting your commission position, but also has hindered you from completing goals that we had set forth when applying to run for office. So he asked us to please consider this, this email in our decision. He says, "I write in regard to the mask mandate and the implications it will have on the El Dorado Police Department. As a law enforcement officer, I may not bring much, of two and a half years, I may not bring much experience from the profession, but I believe I can provide some considerations. I do believe my perspective is a fair, honest, and thoughtful assessment of the repercussions of the mandate, the mandate will have on the El Dorado Police Department and the city of El Dorado as a whole. By enacting a mask mandate, the department will see an increase in calls for service. These calls for service are considered by other municipalities as a chance to educate the public on the importance of wearing a mask or face covering. Unfortunately, my fear as an officer is that this will only create bitterness between these violators and the police department. Encounters such as these may make matters worse in regards to community relations with the police department. The impact of this not only hinders the cohesive relations with the public, but it also requires officers to respond to these calls instead of out earning the life-saving awards that they were, that we recognized earlier today, or finding, you know, the, the drug cases, or, you know, it, it has them answering these calls instead of those, instead of keeping our roads safe, our property and person crimes at a minimum. It also reflects poorly on the city of El Dorado and the sense of criminal activity, a statistic that often people look to when trying to decide a new city to move to. It will result in higher call volumes, higher crimes, and potentially higher traffic accidents as, as a result of less patrol time due to the response to mask violators. As a public servant and police officer himself, he says, "I ask you to put yourself in my shoes. With the current political climate of policing, policing and community relations, your decision on Monday evening could potentially drive a wedge even deeper between the relations of the El Dorado Police Department and the citizens they serve. Please consider these thoughts." I thought it was a very well put together email. It's something that I voiced the other night, it's something that we discussed before, and that is, if we're going to put a mandate in place and expect our police department to go out and enforce that mandate, then we need to expect them to enforce that mandate. We're clearly assigning some pretty steep fines to this. So, you know, why do we go to this, to the trouble of creating additional bureaucracy and additional ordinances from the city if the expectation isn't that they're going to go out actively and aggressively enforce the mandate? Couple of things that we talked about tonight, I, I have some concerns about including the court cost. I absolutely trust in the people to, to make the right decision. When you look at the CDC's website today, our infection rate today is lower than any of the cities that have, that I listed earlier that have, that have mask mandates. Schools have stayed open, it's very unfortunate that they've been remote, some of, some of the classes are K-12. I had a great conversation on Friday with, with our superintendent Teresa Tosh. You know, the, the, the goal of, of our school board is to keep, keep all of our classes in person, but certainly from a, not only an educational, but an economic perspective to keep our K, K through six, or pre-K through five, I guess, in person as we go. And they are confident that as we sit today, that that'll be able to, to happen. I think that a mask mandate is an absolutely unnecessary overreach by our, by our government, by our body. Nick, you mentioned five and a half weeks, what's five and a half weeks? I mean, if there's really a belief that this may, this, that this, the, the virus will be gone, that COVID will be gone in five and a half weeks, then I, I think that's, that's a valid assessment. But I don't think anyone at this diocese believes that the, that the virus will be completely under control and gone in five and a half weeks, which means in five and a half weeks, which I agree, which means in five and a half weeks, it's back up to vote again to continue this mask mandate. So I don't want to fool, I mean, I'm not saying you're trying to, I just, I want to make sure the public fully understands that this isn't something that goes away February 1st. We put a sunset on it so we can revisit it, we know that, that COVID will still be around until everyone's been vaccinated and heart immunity's been reached in this country, COVID will remain. And so throughout the entirety of that time, I anticipate we'll be looking at a mask mandate. I know that the intentions of this group are good. I know that the intentions of this group are to try to find ways to continue, or try to find ways to better protect our people. I also know that for myself, I trust that people do a good job of making health decisions for themselves and their families, as well as doing a good job for making decisions that keep them, you know, that keep them in the, in the position of being a responsible and gracious neighbor and community member, which is why, which is why I'll be voting no. But it is what it is, we're, we're a body of five. I want to apologize to the police department on the front end. I know this is going to add a significant amount of work to the police department and city staff for calls for service and for concerns and comments coming into city staff. It already has, I mean, Tabitha's been inundated with emails and calls before the mandate's even been passed, so. This is part of governing, this is part of, of our, our role in leadership, so this is where we're at today. So if there's not any further conversation...
Was Tabitha able to get a hold of, did we ever get Sean?
I, I, I sent emails to both of them, I don't, I didn't have phone numbers, I sent emails to both, but I haven't heard back from either.
Okay, okay, just wanted to give them a chance if they had shown up.
So Sean's, I, I did mention that Sean had called me earlier and I, thank you for bringing that up. You know, his conversation with me centered around the physical, mental, and spiritual challenges that, that he has encountered with, people that he interacts with, just in the, in having to wear masks all the time. So it just has become, you know, a burden in that area and, and he's recognized some real challenges in talking with people through his church and through, you know, in, kind of in, in his circle, that has really created additional mental problems for some people. We know across the country this year, the suicide rate is higher than it's ever been before because of this. I mean, I think this plays a big part of it, unemployment, you know, the, the place where we're at today plays a big part in that. So that's what a lot of his conversation really centered around. And I'm not sure who the other one was.
There were a couple, but I don't think they actually do anything, Sean was the only one, I think the other one we'd actually already heard from.
Okay.
But the others I can't remember.
So that's, we've, we've all had our comment. When we go through the agenda, city attorney believes ordinance as written is enforceable under the city's home rule authority. The trade-offs that are listed in the agenda, there's no clear evidence that a mask mandate will actually reduce the number of positive cases in El Dorado. Noncompliance will still occur because the city lacks the resources to meticulously enforce an ordinance. People who wear mask or face covering are still susceptible to infection from the coronavirus, it's important that everyone knows that. I don't want people to think that they don't need to social distance. Look, the reality is guys, we talked a little bit on Wednesday about education, trying to get more information out to people. If people don't today understand the importance of good personal hygiene, social distancing and so forth, then they've clearly been living under a rock for a while, so. But it's important that people know that a, that a mask mandate doesn't mean that you can go do whatever you want, whenever you want, because everyone's going to be safe. Even so, wearing masks or face coverings, according to CDC, do reduce the probability of infection and minimizes the potential for continued spread of COVID throughout the community. So there's possible action tonight and that's where we're at.
1341, an ordinance requiring the wearing of masks or other face coverings in public space in El Dorado, Kansas.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Tabitha, can you please do a roll?
Commissioner Lewis?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. We have a motion, a second. Is there any... We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? We've all discussed. Tabitha, can you do a roll call?
Okay, Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
No.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
And the motion carries, four to one. Thank you, guys, again, for the, for the conversation and the input, and we can move on to the next item on the agenda, which is, agenda number fourteen, equipment reserve transfers. David?
City Commissioner, the city's general, general financial and budgetary policies allow for a one-time, well, allow for any funds in excess of the minimum bounds to be allocated to one-time expenses of the discretion of the governing body. Several operating funds have had a surplus arising in part from spending controls implemented in response to COVID-19. These were put into place with that in March, and departments have been very diligent in keeping their expenses under control, because we didn't know going into this year what the economic situation would look like. And so as a result of that, we, we have some, we have a surplus of funds that we have in the, in the general fund and water fund and sewer fund. As you all recall, a few months ago, I believe it was in the summer, we, we had our fleet out and we were looking, able to look through it and look at it. So what we're proposing to do is transfer some of those funds from our general water and sewer fund into the equipment reserve funds for those respective funds. And then shortly after the beginning of the year, we'll come back and have you authorize some. And monies that we didn't think we would have, so we can basically expedite some of those purchases. And as you are aware, some of that equipment is in dire need of replacement.
So this is a good thing.
It is a good thing, yes. So the proposed year-end transfers to the equipment reserve funds include $856,000 from the general fund, $300,000 from the water fund, and $200,000 from the sewer fund. If the commissioner approves these transfers, all of those funds will still meet their current operating reserve fund policy requirements, so it will be able to, will still meet the plans with that. As I mentioned, we don't have a plan yet, but we do know, I mean, there's dump trucks that can be replaced, there's some cop cars we could purchase, but I want to go back to the departments and develop a plan, come back at the beginning of the year, get those things ordered and get, get those purchases.
You're not going to spend all that money on one really cool cop car?
I mean, we could, but that would probably be very prudent.
Isn't that cool, though, for once, to, to not have a plan, but have money, instead of not have money, but have a plan? I think that's cool.
It's cool, but if I had my choice between that and not having COVID-19, I think I'd go with that scenario.
No, you didn't, that wasn't one of the options.
That wasn't one of the options, David. Don't change the rules in the middle of the night. So these dollars are on top of what we've already budgeted yet in next year's budget?
No, yes, so that's a good point. So next year, we've budgeted to spend certain dollars on vehicles equipment next year. This will be in addition to, yes, so it does not replace, what it does is enhances our ability to buy vehicles next year.
Right, it kind of moves us forward in the, in the equipment replacement plan a little quicker, which is great, because, you know, all of us had an opportunity to tour those, those vehicles over there, and we have challenges.
That junkyard over there?
Yeah, the junkyard.
Yes.
And, and we already have a couple dump trucks that we've already approved.
That's correct.
And cop cars that we've already approved. All of this is on top of what we've already approved this year in purchases.
That's correct.
All right. We're, we're getting like, we're getting like butt cakes from, from Brad, right, this year for Christmas?
Butt cakes.
Butt cakes.
Cakes with a hole.
With a mask, it sounds like butt cakes.
What do you think he said, David?
I'll take those two.
Maybe it's supposed to.
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
I move to authorize the transfer of funds to equipment reserve funds as presented by the city manager.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, are there any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries five oh. There's no additional items for discussion. City Commission and Advisory Board updates. Kendra, we are going to start with Matt tonight. I see how he did that. What do you got, Matt?
We have not met, and I don't know, did I miss, I haven't missed a meeting with CTC, have I?
No, I apologize, I was going to try to schedule something and then last week happened and I didn't. So I'm, I'm going to try again this week.
I know we're, we're, we're working towards a few things coming for the 150th, we kind of have a schedule, the things we want to do. January, February was the thought process of when we would have that kind of set in stone so we could start fundraising. We've, we've talked about a lot of things, and it's going to be an awful lot of work for a lot of people, but that's, I think that's coming probably in January to us. Then, like, we'll set the schedule with them and then bring it here to make, get the blessing, and then we'll execute after that. I have no, I got nothing else.
Greg, what do you got?
Okay, my meeting is not till Thursday, so I have nothing to report on, on them. I, I do, I did wear the T-shirt that you had it out, and I had a lot of people reply back when they looked at the shirt and I said, "What's Elks do?" So that's going to be a problem with that shirt, though. So.
I didn't get that.
I, I shared the shirt to tens of people and all, and we're like, "Those are cool Ellos shirts," so, I mean, I get it, it's just how you do it.
Also, Scott, are they going to do something with North Main in the, in the next couple of years? It's starting to slide. You're starting to get some big gaps in the, in the road, we're going to lose it before too long.
Commissioner, Wednesday, there will be some crack ceiling down on North Main from McCollum to the North City limits.
Okay, what about from 12th down to Sixth Street, it's starting, they're starting to get big gaps.
Our, our next highest priority on this, on the highway system is going to be Griffith to, oh, Denver on Central. That, that's getting in really rough shape. So there's going to be some permanent maintenance, some glue to hold it together, done this week, but.
There's a section in there that's got like a three-inch gap in it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
You good? Nick, what do you have?
Library Board actually met today. Everything's going good, they're finished up the, oh, I'm trying to think. Like, some personnel things kind of mirrored the city on, on a few things that they just hadn't ever really addressed, so they kind of took the city's lead and did that, and that's about all we talked about, really. That's all I got. Oh, Merry Christmas, since we won't see you till next year.
Parks and Rec was supposed to meet last Wednesday, but we had a work session, so they canceled that and moved it to next week.
So we'll get to hear about it next year. I, I don't have, I don't really have anything extra to report. I do want to thank, I've, I've tried to send emails back to as many of the people as I could that, that sent emails in with comments regarding the mask mandate. I want to thank everyone for feedback and information and your concern on all sides of the topic. I really, again, want to thank the commission for the work and research that, and thought that everyone put into making the decision tonight, so. And I want to thank staff for putting together the information that they did for us, and, and Chief Zeeman for getting ahold of the other departments and talking with them. And, and again, before we get to David, and then after that end tonight, I just want to recognize again those officers that, that were, were awarded those life-saving and, and commendation awards, and again, thank our staff for their years of service. As we move in, as our last meeting of the year, and we get ready to move into the next, hopefully, next year and a better year, it's important to recognize those that kind of helped keep the city going. So I appreciate all the work that they do, and as Nick said, Merry Christmas to everybody, and I hope that, hope everyone gets, has a safe and happy time with, with their family. David, what do you got tonight?
Just a couple things. So sales tax is currently up about 0.3% when compared to sales taxes from the same period a year ago. So that's good, that's good news. We did see, it, it is, the trend is getting narrower, so we are seeing it catch back up to, I guess, where we were last year. So Asher was a record-breaking year, in part because of Holly Frontier's turnaround. This year, we just have a lot of people shopping more locally than maybe they have in the past, but sales taxes are still, still up a little bit. The Parks and Rec Department anticipates completing the McDonald Stadium irrigation project next week, the weather's been very good on that, and so I, I think they actually were out there running some sprinklers, testing them and getting that in play so that they don't have to worry about tearing up the field and replacing or making repairs or replacing components during the baseball season. They've had a lot of problems with that in the recent years, so that'll be good for that. Youth Recreation Basketball will begin games on January 30th. The Parks and Rec Department will be determining when practices will start, based on the start date here in the next few days. Teams have yet to be formed, so that will likely be the next step as we get closer to the start of the year. We'll have more information out about that coming out very soon. And if you haven't been down to Douglas Road lately, they're about to make the final asphalt lifts on that, pending the weather, of course. We've had great weather, so we're anticipating that they'll be able to get that done very soon, and then once that's, once that's completed, the contractor will make sure that the erosion settlement controls are in place for the winter, and then they'll come back early spring and finish the seeding and do the final closeout and completion project. So Great Improvement Project on that Douglas Road.
It's not, it's realized.
And then finally, the last thing I have is the city received formal recognition for the Sam Ventnor Tennis Court project, so in essence, this is a state championship trophy. It says, "The Kansas City Public Improvement Awards for 2020, first place in the 5,000 to 20,000 competition category. The awards presented to the City of El Dorado in USD 490, the Sam Ventnor Tennis Court Complex, presented by the American Council of Engineering Companies of Kansas." So we got that in the mail today, and we accepted the award formally at the Kansas Association of State Managers Annual Meeting last week, so good news.
That's real nice. That is. Anything else for the good of the order? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Very quick, motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. Y'all have a good evening.